Welcome everyone to our June 10th, 2020 planning board meeting. I'd like to start with the pledge. Everyone please pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all. Thank you very much. Sarette, would you please do the roll call?
Yes, Chairman Curry.
Here.
Ms. Gannon.
Here.
Ms. Gurbino. Mr. Goldenberg. Mr. McNamara.
Here.
Mr. Prince.
Here.
Mr. Roberto.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. First on our agenda is a review of Cobbling Rock. That's an application for a nine lot conservation subdivision, steep slope protection, stormwater management and erosion and sediment control with tree removal permits and construction of two town roads and a preliminary conservation subdivision. The property is located on the south side of Cobbling Rock Drive and Dr. Tony's Road and it's located in our 120 zoning district. What we'll do is we'll start with a presentation from the applicant's representation and then we'll hear from Sarette and Joe if they have comments. Matt, thank you.
Thank you, John. Good evening, everyone. Hope everyone's doing well. My name is Matthew Geronda from BIBBO Associates. We're project engineers for Cobbling Rock Estates. As John described, it's a nine lot conservation subdivision, two town road extensions. As the boards are aware, we've been through several iterations of this to come to the version of the plan that we have now. We had an opportunity to revise the plans and address the majority of the consultant engineer's comments with the exception of some legal documentation and some conditions, which items which we made conditions of preliminary approval. I can share my screen now if you guys want to look at the plan again. One of the main issues that we recently got resolved at the town board was the amendment of the town zoning code for allow deed restrictions to preserve land and conservation as a method for applying conservation zoning. We did receive that at the last work session. Again, I've had an opportunity to review the draft preliminary resolution which Sarette provided and generally don't have any comments, maybe a couple of conditions that I'd like to discuss further with the board, but other than that, I were, the plan is basically the same as the last board has seen it.
Hey Matt, why don't you talk about your meeting with the Fire Prevention Bureau?
Say that again, Joe, I'm sorry.
I think since the last meeting, you've been in contact with the fire prevention, fire department and determinations. Why don't you, why don't you talk about those?
Yes, I apologize. I should have mentioned that as well. We also submitted to the, to the planning board. We did some truck turning analyses. There was some comments made by the Fire Prevention Bureau previously about the diameter of the cul-de-sacs and the width relative to a 96 foot diameter spec based on the state fire code. What we did, the applicant reached out to the building inspector and the head of the Bureau of Fire Prevention to discuss. We provided a truck turning analysis to confirm that the approximate truck length of the 48 foot ladder truck which town of Somers has can maneuver within the 90 foot cul-de-sac. We submitted those to, again, to the planning board and also figures to the Bureau of Fire Prevention. It was confirmed that the 90 foot diameter cul-de-sac was acceptable, which is again, in conformance with the town regs, town road design standard specified 90 foot diameter, which is, which is what these roads are designed for, all dimensional standards listed in the town code.
Good. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you. Joe and/or Sarette, would you like to make some comments before we hear from the board?
I was just going to comment on, we've confirmed, we've reviewed the meeting minutes from the Fire Prevention Bureau to confirm their acceptance. I think the exact language was although they preferred, they, you know, the 96 foot, they, you know, they found the 90 foot to be acceptable. We also therefore looked at the turning radius, the turning analysis done by Matt and the team and concurred that that turning analysis demonstrated that the truck that was used for that analysis, you know, could make the maneuvers to get around that and there was more than one option for them to do that. I would note that the truck that was modeled, I think, was six inches, six inches shorter than, than the actual truck. My, my feeling is that is relatively consistent enough that I think that we can accept the turning analysis as, as completed. It would be especially in the context of the Fire Prevention Bureau accepting the 90 foot diameter. So to me, that was the big item that we had to follow up on. Other than that, we've reviewed the, and provided input into the resolution and I recognize that Matt has a couple of items that we probably want to chat about. I'll wait, you know, to that point to bring that up, but otherwise we're comfortable with the board proceeding with approval of the preliminary subdivision and we, you know, with the conditions outlined that I think we can manage and handle between now and final.
Thank you. Sarette?
Yes, there are several actions that the board needs to take tonight prior to consideration of the resolution. So I can go through those with the board and then we can go to the resolution and have Matt identify the items that are of concern to him and we can talk about those with the board and then the board can make any comments on that. But one of the first things that needs to happen, and I've listed these for you, they also show up in the resolution is, as Matt mentioned, now that the town board has made an amendment to the text for conservation subdivisions, which allow us to move forward on the conservation subdivision as proposed by this applicant. The board needs to also make a determination that it meets certain criterion of sections 170 dash 13.1 and 13.3 and that it meets these criteria and I've listed the reasons. I'd like to identify them for the board and then have you vote on that determination. One is that, and these have to do with why it meets criteria to be a conservation subdivision. One is that it allows for a reduced length of the new town roads and the difference between the conventional and conservation subdivision is approximately 245 linear feet from 1,672 to 1,427. Second item is that it reduces impervious surface areas and that includes 12,200 square feet less from 2.64 acres to 2.36 acres. The creation of a 3.9 acre deed restricted area located on Lot 1 that consists of steep slopes that form a buffer to the adjacent lands of the city of New York to the east and the creation of a 13.22 acre deed restricted area to be located within Lot 5 that consists of wetlands, wetland buffers and steep slopes that are environmentally sensitive areas that will be preserved in their natural state and are adjacent to environmentally sensitive areas that continue on lands owned by New York City Department of Environmental Conservation to the south. Also, the creation of lots whose sizes are consistent with the lot sizes of those in the adjacent subdivision to the north thereby protecting Somers existing aesthetic qualities. And last, that a total of 10.3 acres of deed restricted land out of a total of 39.4 acres will be preserved as conservation lands. So you really have a lot of reasons here supporting a determination of a conservation subdivision. So I'd like the board to take a vote that it meets the criteria of these two sections.
I'll make a motion then that, that the plan does meet the criteria of section 170 dash 13.1 and 170 13.3 of the town code for the reasons that you just stated.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's, that's one of the first things that the board needs to do. The second thing is that two of the lots, Lot 4 and Lot 8, have a reduced width at the front lot line along their cul-de-sac. For Lot 4, it's 91 feet. For Lot 8, it's 99 feet rather than the 150 feet that is required in the zone. However, the zoning ordinance permits a reduction on a permanent turnaround, which of course these are, as long as the width is not less than one third the required width, which it's not, and that the minimum width is net at the front setback line, which it is for these two lots. So I need the board to approve this reduce, reduced width at front lot line for lots 4 and Lot 8.
I'll make a motion to approve those, the difference.
Sir, second?
Those are on the cul-de-sac.
Yes.
There's these two lots right here.
Yeah. But there's
There's a motion in a second.
There's plenty of
All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. No, go ahead, Dennis. I'm sorry.
I'm saying
Okay.
We're reducing the frontage, but there's plenty of front yard in each of those lots.
Yeah, correct. And we meet the dimensional minimum requirement.
Yeah, understood.
Let's vote. Any other board member comments? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Approved. All right, before we move on to the resolution itself, the board needs to take action under SECRE. I provided you with the EAF Part 2 and the negative declaration. The negative declaration goes through those items that were, had potential for some type of impact and those were, as I'm going through it now, potentially an impact on land. And as we stated, these really were not significant adverse impact on surface water. There are many things that have been incorporated into the project SWIP to make sure that there's not a significant adverse impact on surface water. Negative declaration, same on groundwater. I gave a detailed analysis of the impact on agricultural resources. As you realize, this showed up on the agricultural resource determination in the county because of the adjacent Lastin Park. And we got confirmation through the county that there would be no significant impact on the park as a result of this. But there does need to be a note that's placed on the plan noting that for prospective homeowners and the purpose of this is it's less significant for Lastin than it would be of an active farm site, but to let prospective residential owners know that there would be on an adjacent site perhaps noise and other kinds of things that go on, noise, odors, et cetera, on a designated agricultural site. But there will be a note placed on the subdivision. That's one of the conditions of the preliminary subdivision approval. Archaeological resources, no significant impact there and no significant impact on critical environmental areas. So based on that, I'm asking the board to vote on a negative declaration under SECRE.
I'll make a
Go ahead.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we're ready for the consideration of the preliminary conservation subdivision resolution. So why don't you bring those up and Matt, you can talk about those items that you had some questions about.
Sure. As I said before, I had an opportunity to review it. Sarette, thank you for working with me on that and coordinating on some items, Joe as well, your office. Really, the only two items I have questions on are conditions 4C and 4F. And they pertain to lighting and landscaping. The first item, which 4C suggests, requests that the applicant provide a landscaping plan for initial construction activities within the right of way. You know, our intention with this road is really to preserve as many trees as we can and we will, you know, determine that as we prepare the tree survey, but you know, we have a couple of, you know, scenarios where in the town code where that's, it's kind of contradictory to that. One being that this is a town road and within this right of way is going to be town property. And as far as I understand, typically town highway departments are not in favor of maintaining significant amounts of landscaping or trees for that matter. One of the other items I'd like to point to in the code is the dedication checklist for town roads where they identify road shoulders to be topsoiled and seeded and maintained as grass, which is what is typical of Dr. Tony's Road and Cobbling Rock, Cobbling Rock Drive right now. So I just, you know, wanted to bring this up to the board. I mean, if we have to provide a landscaping plan, it's not something that, you know, we were particularly in favor of. It's not something we've done in the past.
So Matt, let me, let me just tell you where that comment is, or is coming from. We, we haven't seen the final tree survey, right? So we don't know. I think we have a sense, but there may be something in terms of review of that tree survey that suggests, hey, we should put some trees here or there. I don't, I think that ultimately if there's nothing that reveals itself during the tree survey that would suggest we need any supplemental planting done, then I, I think the town code would govern and we would seek to just, as you described, a vegetated shult. But because we don't have the tree plant, the tree survey to make that final determination, that's more or less a carryover until we get that.
Carryover into final subdivision.
Correct.
We could just
And we can eliminate it. You know, we get that tree survey, we look at it, we're saying, you know what? We don't need a landscaping plan. We just scratch it off.
Okay, fair enough.
You know, and the one connected to that, which is where I know you're going next, is relative to the individual lots.
Right.
Well, I just want to basically make, you know, we've established some precedent in the past as it relates to, and your office is familiar with this, the Granite Point project. Where we very similarly looked at, you know, didn't have an entire lot, tree survey done for the entirety of the property. We kept it within the initial phase of construction, which was and is in this project, the common infrastructure. And then we just said, hey, when it comes time to place the house, let's get some trees identified. You go out there and you work with Steve and let's place the house in a way that makes the most sense for the trees on that lot. That's what this is referring to, nothing more than that. This is not a subsequent planning board item. This is for you to be working with your office or some other engineer who's pulling the permit to be working with Steve's office in order to see, hey, if we move the house 20 feet to the right, we can save this beautiful maple. Why don't we try to do that? That's really the intent.
Right. And then actually that, that condition, you know, makes perfect sense to me and we've done that in the past. Wholeheartedly with that. The act, the next condition I wanted to go to was the lighting. 4F where it specifies that prior to issuance of a building permit for an individual lot, applicant should provide lighting plans. And I guess I have two questions on that. The first one is, is ultimately who would, who would the individual lot owner have to provide that lighting plan to? And I mean, is it, is it typical that as we just go through a building permit process that, you know, of any single family residential lot, as a part of the building permit plans, residential lighting fixtures be included?
I mean, in the end, I am, I, I, I mean, I'd leave it up to the board. I'm okay striking that if, if, you know, if the board is, is okay with that. I mean, to me really, maybe we can even handle some of that, Matt, with some notes on the drawings that just say, all lighting on a light. You know, when we get to final subdivision, maybe there's a note on the plat, on the, on the drawing somewhere that says, all lots on individual, you know, lot development needs to meet dark sky requirements, need to, you know, no lights bill over. I'm fine with just adding a note to the drawing and avoiding that, 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 you know, circle back with, with the department and add instance, it would give the, the planning, the building inspector some guidance in terms of what, what we're looking for. I'm okay doing it as a note.
I, that's what I was going to suggest. I agree with that 100%.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with that, that too.
This resolution, we could, you know, we could leave it the way that it is and address it as a note and cross it off at final. Or we could modify it as part of this preliminary to, you know, say prior to issuance. No, we would scratch that and say, the applicant shall add a note on the drawing indicating the lighting requirements and specifications for each individual lot or something like that. However you want to handle it is fine with me.
Okay, I, I mean, it's up to your call. Again, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with either one. You know, if you want to craft a specific language in the note and put it in the resolution, we could add that right to the plat. If you're okay with dealing with that final as a note on our plan, then I'm okay with the resolution staying the same.
I just, I, I know it's a lot easier when we're sitting next to each other and I'm marking it up and handing it to Sarette. So with this, with this understanding and agreement, I would suggest we just leave the resolution as it is and we'll, we'll address this as part of final in the way that we just agreed.
Agreed.
Okay.
I have a question.
Sure.
Go ahead.
The, I don't know if this is premature, but how is electricity getting to these sites?
So we did show, this is actually an older PDF, but that was one of Joe's comments that we addressed in the last subdivision. There's obviously existing power in the street. The, we would ultimately have to work that out once we get the under-road construction where the transformer and the exact location of the trench would be with the utility service provider, but it will be underground essentially in the, the shoulder of the road and there'll be maybe one or multiple transformers under, pad mounted transformers for the conduit to connect to throughout the subdivision.
Okay. No, I, I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't going to, you, you guys are talking about trees and obviously everybody is aware that NISEC is cutting down trees right and left. So I, I just want to make sure if you're, if you're underground, then I've got no problem.
Yeah, all, all new utilities will be underground.
Okay, great.
Do you guys have any other board member comments? Yeah, are we putting lighting on the cul-de-sac or is that going to be not lit?
Oh, no, no lighting.
No lighting.
Good, good. Any other board member comments? I'm, I'm sure as you always do, Vicki, you've been through this resolution with a fine tooth comb. Any changes, catches?
No, I'm fine with it. I just, for, for F, as long as we get a lighting plan, you know, I was just thinking you wouldn't want it to constrain someone to a technology that's not current, but it's really open ended. It's, it's the lighting plan that you would put at that time. So no, I don't have any.
Okay. I just, so I just wanted to make one comment. I'm, and working through this process, I don't know, I'm not trying to, to pat Matt on the, Matt on the back or anything, but I was impressed on how quick you turned around all of Woodard and Curran's comments and came back with basically a pretty clean sheet. Do you agree, Joe? I mean, I, I thought usually half of your things are not addressed yet or to be determined or something. I was impressed with this, this whole project.
Matt did a nice job. You know, I think what's nice is there's a nice rapport between, you know, BIBBO's office and our office. You know, Matt is, was very proactive in addressing comments and calling when he had questions, working directly with Jen, and I think when applicants take that approach, it, it, it works out much smoother and, and I really appreciate Matt's, you know, seeking to understand our comments and then getting to the heart of what we're trying to address as opposed to, you know, guessing or interpreting the language as, as he might see it and then we missing the mark. So, you know, I really appreciate the approach and partnership that we've had with, with Matt and BIBBO on this project.
I thank you guys and I, you know, I want to say the same for you. You know, I appreciate, you know, we, we certainly work closely together. You guys gave us great feedback. Sarette, Joe, your office, Jen, and, you know, we obviously have had a working relationship now for years and, and I think it's great that we can communicate and get to the end. And it's a good, good place for everybody.
And fellow board members, I want to commend everybody. I think when we took that initial site walk ways back, I think we were all in agreement that day. This is a beautiful piece of property and I think it's going to be developed very, very, with a good fit for the town of Somers.
I agree.
Yeah, I, I'd like to give a compliment to, to the engineers that this is, this, this is an excellent layout for, for this area compared to the original subdivision. And I think they took everything into consideration and I would be, I would be, I would be proud to back this development as a, as an example of how this town could work well with developers.
I, I have a comment. It's sort of a non sequitur to this particular plan, but it is something that came about in regards to the cul-de-sac dimensions and the town code versus the industry standard that was quoted by the Fire Safety Commission, and I apologize. I think they're called something different. I think that if the, if, if we're going to be doing plans like this again, where, where we're going to have basically contractors coming in and putting in town roads as part of these plans, I suggest that the, the, the Fire Safety Board ends up petitioning the town board to try to change the town code, right? Because what we saw was, and it was a hiccup, minor hiccup that could have if we, if we wanted to protract this plan. It is not in sync, the 96 feet versus the town code, which I think is 86 feet or 90 feet. 90 feet. I mean, if this is such a concern, I really do think that the other agencies need to make motions to the town board to try to change that language so that we are now in sync with an industry standard. And that's my only comment that I have.
I think those 96 feet is for the largest equipment in the country.
Right.
Don't have.
Well, my, my only concern is that it's gonna, if, if we're going to continue to get recommendations from our town committees on industry standards that are not in line with our town code, it may want to be explored or just because all it's going to do is just create another delay, right? And so if, if, if they're in sync with what we know could be presented again or it's going to be a comment from within Somers itself. And I, I think that that's, it's not much to, to make that legislation, legislative change. We just changed the language on a conservation We just changed the language on a conservation subdivision, and it really took a month to make that happen. Nice job, Saret, thank you.
Yeah.
They could easily change the town code when it comes to, you know, what the standards are for cul-de-sac dimensions and road dimensions to become more 2020-friendly, as they say.
May I say something to that, Chris?
Sure.
From a planning point of view, I wouldn't want to create more blacktop than necessary. So I would ask Joe's office to look into this, you know, difference between the 90 feet and the 96 feet, and, you know, maybe advise this board first. Because the fire district and I think Tom Tuma is sort of gonna always go, do a buy-the-book. And if we feel that the 90 feet is sufficient for this town, typically, you wouldn't want, and remember, this is even a conservation subdivision, but I would say in all subdivisions, you wouldn't necessarily want the largest cul-de-sacs you can get. They're not particularly, you know, gorgeous-looking, and it's just more blacktop. So Joe, what do you say to that?
Yeah, we can do that, I'll take that action, I'm sure. We'll work through, and I'll provide the board with, you know, a thought on whether I think we should modify the code on this, and I'll take, I'll take that action.
Well, I, I think it's, I think it's important that the code reflects the, the town that the code deals with. And it's, I think it's totally, I agree with Dennis, it's totally unrealistic to make cul-de-sacs here for hook and ladders that New York City uses for the town of Somers. So if we have, if we have a town code that deals with the facilities in our town, I think that should be, that should be adequate, and I don't think there should be changes to the code.
Right, and there are intermediate steps that we can take to balance safety with the environment as well. We can talk about different kinds of curbing that might allow a truck to, you know, use the shoulder a little bit easier, you know, for any difficult turning. I'll look at all that, and I'll provide the board with some thoughts.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. Any other board member comments?
I think relative to that, my question would be for council. Can the town create a rule that is less restrictive, puts less of a burden for safety on the applicant than the rule already articulated by the state? Can we go, can we go less than what the state requires? Is that something we can do by law?
I, I'll answer that.
Generally speaking.
Yeah, go ahead.
Joe would know the answer.
Go ahead.
I actually did review the fire code. There actually is a provision in the fire code for the local official to make the ultimate determination on, on what's necessary. So there is some flexibility in there.
I would agree with that. It's built into the code to have some local discretion in this particular instance. Generally speaking, the rule you're talking about, Vicki, is a, is a, is a good one, and almost a hard and fast one in most areas of law. This is one where I think it's specifically written into the law, that it's, you know, that there's that, that kind of final arbiter on the local level.
Excellent, just would like to, I'd like to have that question asked and answered. Thank you very much, attorney.
Yeah, again, it, it was the, what was cited by the Fire Safety Commission there was an industry standard for the International Fire Chiefs Association. To my knowledge, that is not a legislative body. And so I'm aware of the discrepancy between the state and the local. My message is to the fire department and all of its management, so to speak, that if it is a concern for them, right, that this six-foot difference is not in line with the town code, that they need to take the steps. I'm not, the planning board won't take those steps. This is a message to them, if it is such a hot safety issue. Otherwise, I think that we should see recommendations based on town code and not on industry standards. Just so that we can streamline this process.
Sometimes standards, the, sometimes the NYCRR, the New York Code of Rules and Regulations, points to industry standards and has them incorporated by reference. So even though they're not published as part of the NYCR, in effect, they are when they point to them. So that's why I just wanted to ask the question.
Sure.
Any other board member comments? Does everyone think we're ready to vote on the resolution?
Yes.
Or move the subdivision first?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Saret, I don't have a number for this. I, I know it's something, I just don't have it right in front of me, I'm sorry.
It's 2020-03.
Okay, 03, okay.
Yes.
All right, then, and if anybody doesn't have, if there's no more, no other comments, I make a motion that we approve the preliminary nine-lot conservation subdivision in accordance with New York State Law 276 and 278, Article 3A, Conservation Zoning and 150-12M Planning Board Action of the Code of the Town of Somers with Section 176 13-3 for Resolution 2020-03.
Second.
As a benefit.
Bye.
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 Okay.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, Matt.
Appreciate all the time and effort that went into this, and I wish everyone well, and we'll be back soon.
Nice job.
Thank you, guys.
Very well done. Meeting in the field, you listened to our concerns about Lot 1 and the steep slope. And I think from those changes, from that, the whole thing just sort of came together perfectly. So thank you very much.
You know, I can't take all the credit, there's this lot, there's not a lot of pieces of property like this around. But there wasn't a lot of site constraints that were really the hamstring of the design of the project, and it all really laid out well. The property speaks for itself.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you again.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. Next on our agenda is the Hanford Wetland and Water Course Protection Permit. It's an application for wetland or water course protection permit for the construction of an in-ground pool and patio at number four Bonneville Drive, on the east side of Bonneville Drive. It's 200 feet from the intersection of London Dairy Lane. The project is in an R40 district. Would the representatives or representative like to give us a presentation on this, please?
Good evening, good evening, everybody. Hope everybody is safe and well. This is unusual, but we kind of like really this kind of meeting, you know? This is a proposal for an in-ground swimming pool near the house on the west side of the property. The proposal is a 16 by 36 in-ground, one-piece fiberglass swimming pool. And we propose a patio around it that consists of permeable pavers to, you know, to accommodate the area of entertainment around the swimming pool. And as you see, the property itself, basically, it's impossible to locate anywhere else without being in the wetland buffer, considering that up to the front of the house is the wetland buffer covering the entire property. In today's situation with the lack of vacation time, many people are going towards the swimming pool, you know, for summer, for kids, what have you, and this family is in the same position. As you see, the proposal is also, like, the swimming pool is a one-piece unit. It is actually within the same day, they dig the hole, they put it in a place with water, and it's ready to go. So it really minimized the construction time and the disturbance. The area that, as proposed, we propose an, under the 5,000-square-foot limit of disturbance, actually, it's 4,500 square feet of area of disturbance. There is 112 cubic yards will be moved. Some of it will be trucked away, and others will be used for leveling the area around the swimming pool. Like, again, I will repeat one more thing, is that there is no other place to locate the swimming pool to be outside the wetland buffer. And we tried to do everything here to reduce the impact on it. By the way, I have Roy Fredrickson, the engineer of the project, on the phone with me. He apologized that he was not able to do Zoom, and I'm here with him talking to you.
True, Barbara Gallow, do you have any comments?
Sure, so, I agree, I mean, I've taken a look at the plan. I haven't been out to the site. I know that there's a couple of things. The applicant has requested a waiver of the wetland and re-verification of the wetland boundary. In all honesty, that's within the board's discretion to do. I would want to go out and take a look at it first, but I have every expectation that what the applicant is saying makes sense and that it's very clear where the line is. And frankly, I don't think a delineation in any way is going to change the fact that most of this house that exists is within 100 feet of the water course. And as a result, I don't think it changes the overall work of this board. I would just leave that to a final determination, once we take a look at it in this field. But my initial, based on what I've seen on Google Earth, knowing the area, is my suspicion is that, that I would be supportive of the board waiving that requirement. Really, what this project comes down to, as Willie just went through, it is a relatively simple project. We're gonna have to manage some stormwater, make sure that we're controlling sediment and understanding the grading and the way the drains infiltrate. So I think that that is the relatively, I think it's a relatively easy project. You know, one of the couple of things that I wanted to just talk to the board about, and, and also the applicant and Willie as well, is talk a little bit about the precedence that we have established for these kind of projects. We've seen a number of these. And usually, what we would expect, just so, you know, Willie, as you're working with Roy on this, is, is any impervious surfaces or any disturbance, let's put it that way, any disturbance inside the buffer, even though you don't cross the threshold to do stormwater quantity and quality, we want, we want you to do stormwater quality and quality. So in other words, underneath this patio, maybe, you know, we need to demonstrate that you can, that it can infiltrate the amount of stormwater that it needs to to create a pre- and post-condition for that disturbed area that is equivalent to what exists now, right? So we'll be looking for a pre- and post-analysis, you know, on the water quantity side and also some quality treatment, which I think you would accomplish for infiltration anyway, for the new disturbed areas.
Okay.
So then, then step two is, what we've gone is to say, you know, but we also have a mitigation plan to address, right? So we're, we are in the buffer, so what is the mitigation? What we just talked about was you mitigating for the new, but not necessarily for, you're treating what you're installing, but, you know, we haven't necessarily considered that mitigation. So what we'd ask you to do, and we've done this before, is to look at the existing impervious surfaces, right? There's plenty of this house that is inside. And, and, you know, we're flexible, but I want us to make a step to improve the situation. So maybe it's looking at a, you know, we've done a rain garden to, you know, offer some roof leaders, or maybe it's, you want to, you know, just direct some of the roof leaders into an infiltration system that you're gonna build to handle. Just let's try to improve the situation by doing a water quality element for something that exists as the mitigation. And that's the precedent that we have, have utilized in the past. I forget the name of the project that we just went through, one next to the lake. You remember, I forget the name of that one.
Yeah, they were doing an extension on the house, I remember that.
It's basically a very serious scenario. You know, they're very close to a water body, they're looking to expand. We say, great, take care of what you're building new and do some mitigation by taking care of something that already exists. And, you know, we'll be flexible as to, you know, like, in that instance, I give you an idea here, Willie, is that in that instance, we wanted them to treat the entirety of the roof. They said, well, if I'm gonna do that, I now need to do two rain gardens instead of one, and I really don't have the right. So we said, all right, let's just do the one, let's maximize the size, and we'll treat half of it. So we'll work with you on it, but I want to, you know, for mitigation, improve the situation from a water quality perspective.
Okay, sounds good. We'll try to do, in other words, like, try to do best fit with what works best without creating a major project out of this situation.
Yeah, I mean, in the end, I think one of the ways to look at it is, is if you're gonna, you're gonna put permeable pavers, you know, if you just create some reservoir volume underneath them to handle the pavement, then you won't have to do that much more and put a leaf, you know, gutter into it. That'll work. And one of the things, that's another thing that I want to be conscious of is understanding the winter drawdown, because I can't just have you draw it down and pump it into the river, right, into, into the stream.
There is this type, let me interrupt you, sorry. This type of pool has no drawdown, the water will only be added to it. There's no reason for it to backwash or anything like that. That type of system.
All right, so there's no wintering over where you have to drain it?
No, no.
Okay.
Okay, so that's not there.
Because I was gonna say, a lot of times with the, with, when you put infiltration underneath, you could always use it also for drawdown. So if the, if the homeowners did need to, for some reason, lower the pool instead of having to hire a truck in order to take it away, they would be able to utilize the infiltration system, you know, to.
I, I completely understand that. And the situation, like I said, this type of pool, this type of application is one unit. There's no reason for drawdown unless, you know, for maintenance, they want to remove the water out of it. But for normal winterizing, whatever, there's no reason for it.
Okay, good. And that's really the extent of, of where I think the focus that we need to be on this is, is let's just make sure that we're treating what we're putting in and we're mitigating, you know, doing the little mitigation for what exists. And I think it can be handled relatively easy on the site without that much additional cost to the homeowners.
All right, sounds good. We will investigate. Joe, would you like to go visit the site and walk it? I would love to meet you out there if you would like.
Well, I think a lot of it depends on what the board would like to do, schedule a sidewalk to see this. And if, if so, we'll do it then. If not, I'm happy to meet you out there to help make the determination on the water course.
I'll communicate with you on it and see what will work timewise. But I don't know what the board members' input on this.
How much disturbance are we talking about?
4,500 square foot the area of disturbance, that includes everything.
I mean, I could go either way with a sidewalk, I'll leave it up to colleagues.
I think, I think the, the project is pretty clear, pretty simple, and I don't think it necessitates a sidewalk.
Okay. It, it also sounds to me like this is the only site for the pool, so it's not like we're gonna go out there and try to pick two or three other sites.
I think that the other project that Joe was referencing had a little bit of choice about where the pool could go. Also, there was an easement for, that the town needed access to go and clean something out. So there were some complicating factors on the other project, which I don't see here on this project. So I would be okay looking at, looks pretty straightforward if it worked out better for Joe to just deal directly with the engineer. I would be okay with that.
We will address, we will address those comments that Joe came, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Aesthetically, it's better to have it behind the house than on the side of the house.
Correct.
All right, so Willie, why don't you get back with me? We'll put our schedules together. It sounds like, John, it sounds like overall the board is comfortable with our office just handling this sidewalk?
Yes.
And I can coordinate and provide a report out to the board.
That's, thank you.
Okay.
Will you give me a buzz on my schedule these days? I don't, I don't.
Make it with you, anything else? Make it with you. Anything else?
I don't think so. No. I don't think so. No.
All right.
Hurry up. Hurry up and get the pool and we can swim in and have a meeting there.
Will, give me a call tomorrow. We'll.
I will.
Time either for later this week or early next week. This way we can get this moving. I assume that Bill and Christine would like to be in this pool at some point this year.
The little ones. The little ones.
Hi, guys.
Okay.
I, I have, I have, I have a question, which is totally separate from zoning requirements and the planning board. The, you were talking about this being a, a one-unit pool, 16 by 36.
Yes.
How, how does that get to the site?
Via truck and a crane. A trailer bring it and a crane will bring it over. You often do it swung over the house itself. It's a fiberglass. It's like a tub.
You can, you can, you can move a 16-foot wide thing on a road?
Absolutely, absolutely. It comes in diagonally. They have a special time for the transportation.
On the side, okay.
Exactly. Standing up high, wide, height-wise, you have to take consideration. A lot of, it's becoming very popular. Yes, diagonal, an angle.
It's only seven foot deep.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
You're quite welcome. Joe, I'll communicate with you tomorrow.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Have a nice evening, everybody. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good night. Any other board member comments? Any other board member comments?
This is going on the agenda?
Our next, our next meeting, this is it. Our next meeting is July 8th.
Okay.
I'll make a motion. We adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Good night, all. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Happy 4th.
Happy 4th.
Yes, happy 4th of July.
All right. Let us know if you need us for a second one in July.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.